And the security procedures, school building, safety and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I think we have.
Mr. Lesniak?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Simms is in, aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. We will adjourn to closed session at 7:07 PM.
And to return to open session at 7:35 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, we are in open session again. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is our, the Lyle 202 mission statement, which is to provide our learning community with the essential education skills and experiences for future success. So we'll keep those thoughts in mind as we meet this evening. Next is public comment. I don't see anyone in, was there anything uploaded to public comment? Okay, thank you. Brings us to our action items then. There's been, yeah, there's been a request to poll action item 7A5. Anybody else have any items before then? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item 7A consent agenda, 7A1 board meeting minutes, 7A2 payroll pay orders, 7A3 vendor pay orders, 7A4 personnel, 7A4A certified employment, 7A4B certified leave, 7A4C classified employment, 7A4D extra duty resignation, 7A6 skyward business software renewal agreement. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
If we could please have a roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Di Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye, and Ms. Allman.
Aye, thank you. Okay, item 7A5 is our student fees and building usage fees. We had discussion in our finance meeting before this. Is there any other discussion now? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended student fee schedule and facility usage rates for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. If we could, if we could please have a roll call.
Second.
Oh, do we have?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard.
I didn't hear her.
I'm hearing.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. Di Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Nay.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye, Ms. Allman?
Aye. Okay, thank you. There'll be no more motions and seconds for a minute here. Financial information is item eight. The Board acknowledges receipt of the following reports, 8A financial report and 8B treasurer's report. Is there any discussion on any of those items or any questions? Okay, then item nine is our discussion items, and the first is 9A board code of conduct and agreed upon norms review. We do this every six months to go over the board norms and the code of conduct. So are there any, any questions that anybody had? I did ask Dr. Filippiak to upload information on, on the, that we had discussed back in November, and that was when we were reviewing item, our board policy 810, it came up for discussion in the second attachment there, which was, let me pull it out here.
It's the fourth attachment.
Yeah, the, okay, so that was, it was based on, on the amendment that came, or the, the press plus items that were the second attachment, and there was discussion about whether or not we felt that there should be restrictions on any of the, the board media posts. And so we had asked the attorney, Dr. Katolik had asked our attorney who felt that yes, we should label personal or with a disclaimer, my views do not necessarily affect the views of Lyle CUS2D202, and yes, use district accounts for official communications. So at that time, we had talked about, should we include that in our board norms? Another suggestion is to also include it in the board policy where it came up in, in 810. And it could be as simple as that the board will label social media accounts as personal and limit district-related communications to official district accounts. So if we put it in board norms, it seems like it should be in board policy. That's, that's my thought process. Doesn't necessarily have to go into the norms if it's in policy, but we have tried to reflect the board norms to reflect what's in policy or restrictions. So I guess, you know, without a lot of discussion, my suggestion would be under item four of the code of conduct to say, I will label my social media accounts as personal and limit district-related communications to official district accounts. And then in the board policy, just what it had said under press plus two, which is the second attachment, it's best practice for board members or employees with social media accounts to clearly label their personnel accounts as personal and limit district-related communications to official district accounts. So we could easily add that phrase in, in 810 as a second paragraph if we wanted to.
I, I think I agree with the first part of that, to put in that, to use for official purposes, you need to use your official media accounts or, I think that's fine. As far as having any board member, future board member have to require to label all their personal accounts and everything as personal, I, can we actually do that legally? Like, that's, that's saying that on my email account at home, do I need to have the bottom, this is my personal email every time I use an email, and all my Facebook accounts and Twitter and, actually, sorry, the, you know, TikTok and everything, I'd say this is, this is my personal account. I think that might become a little bit unwieldy.
I think it would only be if there is anything district related. That's the way I interpreted press plus two.
That's the way I'm looking at it, too.
That, so if you have your personal account where there's nothing is said about the district at all, but if you have a personal account where you're talking about the district specifically, as does, you know, sometimes come up, I think then it would be appropriate. But just for a personal account, if you're not saying anything, you know, it's a family and friends account, the way I, the way I interpreted and read press plus two is if you're speaking on behalf of the district.
Does that include a like? So I had a friend or family member like a band event, and I, and I like it, or they write it and I like it, does that mean my Facebook account needs to say this is my personal account?
Personally, I wouldn't see why. You're not communicating, you're liking, I mean, I, that's just my interpretation. I don't know if any, anyone else has, but you're not, you're not communicating something about the district, you're just, this is your.
I think you are communicating.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Just, I think you are communicating something about the district when you like a post about the district.
Well, the other disclaimer is the views expressed are strictly my own. I don't, I don't know that I would be that strict, but that's just.
I just think that I.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
When I have somebody giving thumbs up to something or heart, they're saying, I agree with what was written in what I was liking or loving.
I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I suppose you could do that, but are you really taking a position or anything? Is it, is it any kind of policy thing that you're affirming or disaffirming?
Right.
Right? Because I think that's the spirit of what's being presented here. You know, if you like the play, okay, great, but you're not making any kind of policy that only certain people can like this play or not like this play, you know, like.
Yeah, I agree, I looked at it the same way you did, Steve, and I actually think if you are not commenting on policy, like you're saying, it kind of falls into number five, that I will not speak without consent of the board. So, you know, if there's like a debate on something and you're weighing in from a personal account, you're, you're speaking on behalf of the board without the board's consent, so you're already violating a board norm. So I don't know that we need to go to the level of saying you have to label it, because if, you know, so-and-so's Twitter account or, or whatever it's called now is saying something, where, and you're speaking on behalf of yourself, like, you already violated number five. So I don't know, do we need to add another if we, I know the social media thing came up, but I think we brought that same example of if you like the play, that's good. I think it looks well that we're showing support of the activities of the students in our district, but we shouldn't be speaking on debates on like forums and things like that.
That's the way, looking at press plus two, has actual authority to speak on behalf of, in our, in this case, it would be on behalf of the district. So you're not exercised when speaking on social media and if official speech is scrutiny under the First Amendment, you know, that's getting a lot more into expressing an opinion on behalf of the, the district or as Kate says, on behalf of the board.
Because, like, you could comment on education policies in general, and then someone, like, not necessarily Lyle's, and then someone might interpret that as Lyle School Board's statement on the official policy. Is the only gray area that I see? I don't, I agree, like, if I'm going to like that, you know, there's like a special day at the school, I don't think that matters, but if I'm going to go on one of the other platforms and say XYZ policy I agree with or I don't, someone might interpret that, that then that's Lyle's view.
I would actually say we should be cautious even, even with that, right? Anything in that realm.
But that's not necessarily named, so I think that's where it comes in if you are saying that your views are your own, because you want to comment in the larger community, rather than like the, you know, just about the squad.
So what does that physically look like? I mean, if we post, say, on the Park District or something like that on our personal account, do we then, in the post, say, this is, you know, like a, a template set of statements, like, oh, this is my personal account, blah, 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 this does not reflect District 202 opinion, blah, 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 and so on and so forth? Are there like a, a template text that we need to drop into all of our posts when it has?
I don't, I don't think so, because I think, you know, to me, it would depend on the situation. So if you were weighing in on something, you could easily say, this is my personal opinion, or as was suggested, what is, what was the other? There was, there was another term that our attorney used, personal.
Have we ever had an instance where someone's posted, a board member say, I as a 202 board member say that this blah, 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 whatever? Has there ever been an instance?
We've, we've had websites, you know, district websites, you know, specifically during campaigns, I would say, where there's a lot of district information shared. And then it would be, this is my personal opinion, I, this is, as he's, I found this, my views do not necessarily affect the views of Lyle. So if, you know, if there was anything that specific you were commenting on, I think it's easy to say, it's my personal, this is my, I'm not speaking on behalf of Lyle 202.
This does seem a little nebulous, though, like, we're going to have to, like, look at each individual instance and determine if the board member made the correct decision.
I don't, I can't even think of an instance where I've seen a board member comment, so I don't know that it's going to be that difficult. I think this was just a word of caution, you know, because there was a case ruling, it gets back to the First Amendment and social media. And so, you know, it's more of a caution, I think, for us, and, you know, we, we don't have to have it in, in either place. It seems like it would be best in that, in section 810, or in board policy 810. You know, as long as it's there, we wouldn't necessarily have to have it in board norms, but wanted, you know, we wanted to bring it back for discussion, so that's where we are. Kate pointed out, and the third bullet under number four, you know, we're not, it's a restriction right there, that we don't post anything negative, and there were reasons for that in the past. And, you know, if we have social media accounts, we will list, list, or limit district-related communications to official district accounts. We could easily just say it that way.
Cam?
Yes.
Sorry, double hit my button. But I also think, what else already covers us, as here is 9.3, I will not post rebuttals or corrections to district-related social media posts. So, you know, if there is a conversation going on, that's something that impacts the district, I think, I think if there was a concern, I know Greg, you were asking that too, like, how would this, I think it would be brought to our attention, like, someone would probably, my assumption would be that it would be sent to our attention, that someone would say, we saw this posted by a board member, is this what the board thinks? And that could be looked, you know, reviewed to see if it fits within our norms. And, you know, because I believe in here too, I mean, we're, there's a lot, all the different things we have in here, we understand that no matter where we go, we're going to be viewed as a board member, so it just, it fits that same general expectation.
So are you suggesting that we don't include it in here, or that we expand, like, nine, the third bullet, or four, the third bullet?
I, I don't know that we need, I feel like what we have is so robust that if there was a post, it would be in, it wouldn't be in accordance with what the other things we've already agreed on, and it would fall within one of those lines.
Except in that one example I shared of if there's like a larger conversation going on, not directly related to Lyle, and like, so there's a lot of conversation happening right now in the education space, and someone commented on a social media platform, and then someone who had access to that thought then that that was the view of Lyle. That's the only, and I'm not saying we need it, I'm just saying that it's, because it's not necessarily about Lyle.
Well, they, they could think that, but that's just their, their interpretation. So then that just becomes a matter of discussion if someone says, hey, you know, so-and-so on the board, I saw you commented on this thing. I'm like, okay, I commented on the, whatever that national thing is, but, you know, I'm not speaking as a board member. I mean, it, it would come to light if somebody's talking about it, right? So then that discussion is had, which might actually be a good thing, because now it, you know, starts a robust discussion about a national topic that maybe not, people weren't aware of. So, there you go.
Thank you, Steve. Would you, do you want board policy 810 to be expanded with the one paragraph, or do you want to leave it as is? And that would be adding just a statement, is best practice for board members with social media accounts to clearly label their personal accounts as personal, limit district-related communications to official district accounts. That is, that, that's from.
Could you also change it to very, not, maybe not necessarily mark your account, but mark the message going, you know, I think, you have the phrase like, in my opinion, or this is opinion of my, my personal opinion of the situation, to know that's not part of the board, you know?
Rather than the account.
Rather than the account, because then you can get in the specifics of instance of a message that you want to. So, for example, I went and quickly looked at my Facebook page I use, if I'm, would be running, you know, for reelection. It's clearly a political page, you know, and it was set up specifically so not to cause gray area with my personal account or with my board activity. So it's very clearly delineated as I'm running for a campaign here.
And, and you could easily label it, that this is.
It's, it's, it's naturally labeled already through Facebook. So I think there's steps board members can do to make sure that's very clear, but outside of that context, while I agree with Kate, that if they, if someone had a message out there, it's going to fall into one of, one or more of these, these buckets anyways, but I do like the idea of, as a general, suggested practice, to do some of the suggestions there. I'd be fine with that.
Okay, so, you know, I'm going with the attorney's suggestion, but should we just put that into board policy then?
Sure.
And not, and not have it as norms, because we feel the norms are already covering it?
Yeah, I think.
I agree.
Okay. So it would just be a matter of adding that one statement, is best practice for board members or employees with social media to clearly label their personal accounts as personal and limit district-related communications to district, to official district accounts.
Maybe not personal accounts, but personal messages on, are we doing the account level or the message level? I would support a message level disclosure.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not certain it's going to be easy to go across all your social media accounts and change your name to like Greg Nagler Personal, or, you know, so on and so forth. I'm not even certain they allow you to do that, you might have to open up a new account.
And I'm just checking to see how it was presented to the attorney.
So like, on Facebook, you'd have to open a separate account that's more of like a business account to be able to label it that way, otherwise you would have to have, like, your first name and last name. If you want something that's like labeled with that situation where it says that, you know, this is your personal account or whatever, I think you have to, it's like, not business, there's like a, there's a, like a group or there's a different setting that you have to have, which is like how you're saying, that you have your political thing, that's a separate kind of account, I believe, not like a regular one. So that might, yeah, come into, okay, a difficult situation.
The way it was presented to the attorney is, should board members label all social media accounts as personal and limit district-related communications to official district accounts? And the attorney said, yes, label personal or disclaimer with my views do not necessarily reflect the views of Lyle 202, and yes, use district accounts for official communications. So just sharing with that. So we'll, just regarding there that, or, you know, considering part of that, we'll put that into board policy 810?
I agree with using.
Okay.
Sorry, who's that? Is that me or you?
Congratulations, Sarah, you agreed to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with, I like the statement about using your, your district account for district business, you know, I like that, and I like having, labeling specific messages to, to be very clearly, it's your opinion and not. to, to be very clearly, it's your opinion and not the opinion of the board. But labeling the account, I think that gets, firstly, you got to label, so somewhere you're going to bury in the about on your Facebook page, this is my, everything on here is my personal opinion, no one's going to look at that. In fact, any account, you're going to, it's going to be buried somewhere in the account level, and nobody's looking at that. They're looking at the message itself. So that's the other reason I think labeling account is less effective.
Could it just be as simple as, it's my personal opinion?
Exactly.
You know, the expectation, right, is if you're on the board and you're going to comment on something, it's your opinion. And if you're doing official board business, it has to be through, you know, your official account.
District communications. Well, and I think that's exactly what the attorney's saying, is that you label it as personal, or, or, yeah, these don't reflect the views of...
Like a lawyer.
Yep. So, so, so like a lawyer. All right. How would you like the wording in 810, then? Just to say that...
I think the second half of it's, you know, the direction to use the, you know, 202, your 202 account, if it's official business is, is great. And the first part is, you know, if you're going to take a position on something, it's, it's my opinion, something along those lines.
How about if we say, with social media, to clearly label their personal opinions as personal?
Sure.
That would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And they'll take care of everything and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we'll bring it back for reading at the next, with just that one phrase. And I would agree that the Board norms cover everything else that's needed for, all right. That was a future agenda item that we took care of then. All right. Any other Board norms that we want to talk? Okay. Now, we'll move on to Item 9B, which is our policy review and first reading. I'll turn that over to you.
All right. All right. Thank you, everybody, for sending questions. So we'll start with Policy 7:190, Student Behavior. We had, we had five board members reply with, except changes as presented. Also, this has been uploaded to Board Books if you wanted to read along. We, I think Pam, you had suggested, under prohibit, under prohibited, prohibited student conduct, to change under five to read, using or having interaction with electronic devices unless authorized and approved by an administrative teacher or school staff member. I think, was that already changed in there? I think...
Yeah, I think, you know, all the, all the changes were already incorporated into the policy, so that's...
So it's already included in there, as well as the electronic books, et cetera. There's one question, the attorneys had vetted the language changes, and they have not yet. And any, I'm sorry, no, let's skip ahead there. That for this, I'm sorry, I had, was on the wrong one. We're doing 7:70 attendance and truancy, sorry. So I was on the wrong sheet. So again, we had five board members, except changes as presented. Questions, how attorneys have vetted the language changes. Administrators' responses, there are not any proposed language changes. Policies being reviewed as part of Board Planning Calendar. The other question is, a board member asked on Page 2, number nine, what type of PD is offered on the appropriate and available or supportive services for the promotion of student attendance and engagement? And when was the last time it was offered? Promoting school attendance and classroom engagement is a mandated GCN training, is required at at least, at least once every five years.
Okay. Thank you, Linda.
All right. Anything else on 7:70? We just accept as presented? I want this updated. Okay. Okay. Moving on to 6:235, Access to Electronic Networks. We had five board members, four board members, except changes presented. We had one question, should the first sentence after Item 3 on Page 1, a force start with the superintendent designee shall develop instead of superintendent? And the question was asked because of Policy 7:180, Prevention and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment on Pages 3 of 9, under the Bullying Prevention and Response Plan states, the superintendent or designee. So...
It was me that asked that. And it's just to keep the language throughout consistent. That's all.
Everyone go with changing, adding the designee?
Sure.
Okay. Pam, your changes have all been already incorporated, is under the accepted use heading, third paragraph, et cetera. That's been included already in there. Somebody has reviewed that. Randy, you also had a question about, in the event that school officials conduct an investigation, require a student to share their phone or computer data, would the school officials be required to have a parent present, or at least, at the very least, notify a parent before the data search is conducted? Administrator's response, if a student has created, written something using a school-issued Chromebook, it requires adult intervention. It is typically found using our Gaggle software. Because the computer is technically borrowed property, parent permission is not necessary. If the information flagged via Google Gaggle software is concerning, referencing harm to self or harm to others and/or bullying, the parent is notified, which follows procedures at the junior high and high school. If buildings receive reports of something obscene or pornographic, Justin Lewis, Officer Justin Lewis is contacted. Building admin will not look at the phones if this is suspected. In the very rare situation where the student's personal phone is involved, the investigation is conducted with the student's cooperation. In fact, most times, the image is needed for cyber conflicts. There are generally screenshots from other students that document unkind cyber behavior. Most of this happens via Snapchat, where conversations and stories disappear. So unless screenshots are taken at a time of conflict or building, a bullying event, the school would not be able to find anything. Admin typically notifies parents of the person exhibiting unkind behavior and asks them to review the child's phone and social media usage. Thank you for that response.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, there was a question from administration, should a school official conducting investigation require a student to cooperate with the investigation? Is there specific information about the activity on the student's phone or account on social network, website to validate school disciplinary rule or policy in the course of the investigation? The student may require the share of the content reported in order to allow official, school officials to make a factual determination. I think you've answered that above. So, okay.
But just to clarify, for the access to social media, like, if, like, let's say there wasn't a screenshot from other students shared, would the student be asked to share their password, or would that be the point in time when the parents were called?
From what I understand, that's only happened once or twice, and the student did cooperate and share their device. That, I don't anticipate asking for a password. An admin may say, can I see, you know, can you pull this up? Can I see it? If a student didn't cooperate, and it was, again, harm to self or others, or pornographic, or to that level, Justin would be called in, and generally, the police would handle it from there and get the parents involved.
Great. Anything else? Did we cover everything? Yeah, but, awesome. All right. If, anything else? We'll just accept changes with the addition of the designee. Anything else? All right. Moving right along. 7:180, Prevention and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment. We had five board members respond, accept changes presented. One board member except changes presented with suggested changes, which, I think Randy had mentioned some font sizes were off for the nondiscernational coordinator info, compliant managers, and anonymous supporting info supposed to be smaller font size. Not sure if it was just a PDF issue. Let me bring it up.
I'm not sure. Just when it pulled up for me, it had, like, a way smaller font size just for that section, and everywhere else was fine. So I...
I haven't have the ability to change the font size, so that's strange.
Oh, yeah, that's weird, then.
I will look at it.
I wonder if it changes it depending on how big the words are or something?
I, I will double check.
Okay.
Mark that to funky PDF. Okay. In the second paragraph, Pam, you said in the second...
Those are already in there. You know, and just, just as a reminder, the, the changes that were made and read were from the student handbooks. When we talked about cell phones, that's directly from the high school and the elementary student handbooks.
Okay, great. So all your stuff is incorporated already. So there's one question of the attorneys have vetted this language, and not yet.
I was one more question for the entire thing.
What's that?
I asked one question for the entire thing.
Yeah.
That was a good question, though, Craig.
Hit it twice.
It's up every time, every section.
Oh, was up the question for each one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just an overall question.
Okay.
I didn't mean it for every section.
Okay.
It was like, why is it sidelined to every section?
Okay.
Ask it four times.
Okay. No, no, it's not in every section. I think it's just in two. Anyways. All right. Any other additional discussion on 7:180? To accept changes as presented?
Yeah, accept.
Great. Note of that. All right. 7:190, Student Behavior. Five board members indicated, except changes presented. I think Pam, all your stuff was incorporated already. So any further discussion on this?
Have the attorneys vetted?
I don't know what I did. I don't know. I must have been copy paste. All right. So everyone accept changes as presented? All right. And that's the end of the list.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Brings us to 9C, which is our preliminary official school calendar for the 2026, 2027 school year.
Thank you. We've gotten into a nice pattern of doing the same thing, because it seems to be working for the school calendar. So what you, of you, is a very typical calendar, calendar to what we have this year and, and for 25, 26. This first day of school for students is on August 13, which is a Thursday. Again, remember, as we create this calendar, one of the big ideas is that first semester attendance days are pretty well balanced with second semester attendance days. So pretty typical start time of August 13, which, when we do our required 181 school days, 176 attendance days, we will end on Friday, May 21, 2027. We're scheduling four institute days, as we have in the past, and four half-day in-service or early release days. Those days are used for teacher collaboration and meeting and curriculum, and we go through discipline, whatever, whatever the school needs to work on, that's what's happening on those days. Parent-teacher conference schedule is remaining the same as it has over the last few years, with the high school being a different time from the elementary. That seems to be working really well and aligns well with assessments and timing for semesters and things like that. So that will remain the same. Winter break, we're always kind of at the mercy of when the holidays fall. So we will see, we will see a Monday, December 21, as the first day of winter break, and Friday, January 1, is the last day. We do still have that weekend on the end of that vacation, but July, or January 1 is the actual last day. Spring break starts on Monday, March 29, and will go through Friday, April 2. As a side note, there is Good Friday, or Spring Holiday, excuse me, that is on March 26. So that will be aligned with spring break. If there's no emergency days, the very last day will be on Friday, May 28. As a side note, Memorial Day is on Monday, the 31st of that year. So there's no, we won't go over that year. No matter how many snow days we hear, it'll be, that will be the end. Any questions or thoughts?
I am sorry, I forgot to send this in, but I had a question about, I thought that there were days off for voting now, and I don't see those in here. Or is that not anymore?
It's, in the past, it has been mandated, and we have not received if that has been a mandate yet.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's just the, the big elections, or if it's, I don't know.
Okay, so that you wouldn't know until closer to, anyway?
If, yeah.
Okay.
And they did tell us late, and we had, we had to revise the calendar because of that. But as of right now, it is not required, and so we don't have it planned.
Okay.
And I think this, the next election day is during our spring break.
And none of our schools are pulling in place, correct?
No.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I will bring it back next month.
Very good. 9D is our Freedom of Information requests. Those are in the Board Packet and have been responded to. Questions? 9E is Public Comment Follow-Up, and that, too, is in the Board Packet.
Please turn on your mic.
So sorry. Thank you. 9E is in the Public Comment Follow-Up. Those are in the Board Packet also, with response was given to those. 9F is our Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to you.
Excuse me. I've included, just a summary, the principals wanted me to pass along to you. Lyle Elementary had a variety of things around. Their friendship days that they had participated in, and they had their winter dance, which I guess is always a very big turnout. The junior high had their junior high play, which I heard was quite well done. And that Family and Consumer Science class actually traveled, and they do this often, to the Park District to participate in some of their programs that they have at the Park District. And then we're also proud to share, and this isn't the first time, Inspire Magazine earned top, one of the top recognitions. And so I think we have found a lot of success in students participating in that. And it's nice at a global level when you're actually getting acknowledged at the top award. At the high school, Shiv Patel was named National Merit finalist. So we're very proud of all of his hard work, that getting that recognition is very, very difficult. And so we're excited for all of his hard work being recognized. Curriculum and articulation is something that the junior high and high school also wanted us to be able to share. We pride ourselves on being a unit school district, aligned as much as we can. But now we've been carving a bit of time so that the individual schools can talk to each other. And so our most recent afternoon day that we had with the staff, they were able to have the high school staff travel to the junior high and be able to do some shared learning, which is the second time they've done this this year. And then at the district level, I think I saw most of you at cabaret night. And so at this year, I think they were actually sold out, from what I remember. And it's probably the largest event we've had since COVID. So it's nice to get to more traditional levels, but I'm always inspired by just the level of skill that these students were able to bring. So that concludes my Superintendent's Report.
Anybody else? I just want to do a shout out to Lyle Elementary, to the fourth and fifth grade concert. Those students and the teachers involved all did a terrific job, so, and they looked wonderful. Anybody else have any? Okay. Then I will go on to our committee reports, which is 10A, our Facility Master Planning did not meet. 10B, Finance did meet earlier this evening.
We did meet.
Yes, we did.
May need to be in the, on the shared drive tomorrow.
Okay. Excellent. And I think we voted on a couple of the items in our regular packets. So 10C, Policy? We had covered a few.
Covered four policies earlier in the meeting today, and approved everything as presented.
Okay. And Linda, there's your, there's that feedback right there. 10D is Vision 202, and Vision 202 did meet. There was a summary in the, in the Packet, or at least from the last meeting. And anything else you wanted to add to that, Dr. Flippack?
Also, just want to reiterate that we had paused for talking to the high school students into this year. So I've been talking to our new principal, Eric, and he is very much supportive of having those, some of the conversations we had at the junior high last year with the students at the high school when we get back from spring break.
Great. Thank you. And I think we're working on a, a survey to bring to the, to the committee, the planning committee. Item 11 is our Board Representative Reports. Home and School meets the minutes from, the January 29 meeting are in the Board Packet, and I believe it meet this Wednesday. So we can discuss offline who might be available for that, or we can, we can talk about it afterward. One of us will be there. And 11B is the ISB Delegate to Board, I believe. Anything you want to do as reminders?
I just see the, the March meeting coming up. So...
Okay. March 5, I think it is?
March 5, yes.
Okay, great.
It's a bit further away, up in Addison, so... It's a bit further away up in Addison, so if we, if we want to commute together, we can all communicate with each other. Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Great. And I just wanted to mention something that Paula pointed out. We all got a copy of the IASB legislative report, February 21st, so that would have been last Friday. And if, in looking through that report, there's an actual section on join the advocacy ambassador program and it's an in-depth understanding of state and federal legislative development. And so I think Paula's interested in, in doing that. I would be glad to also, and if anybody else is, there's a, I think a virtual meeting on March 14th, so it is in that paragraph if you want it. So it's learning more about if there's call to actions, what to do and when to get involved with legislative reports, I'm sorry, legislative actions that are... Lend also is an overseer of that and the two work together. So it's kind of good training or good, good background, so. And there's also in that, in case you're interested, there's a legislative tracking list, so you can actually click onto those sites in the Board of Education, anything related to that, that's legislation that's pending. If you got Open Meetings Act, insurance, you know, there's a whole lot of, but it was a nice tool to be able to go back and look at those. So it was actually a very good report. Paula, thanks for volunteering to do that and share that. Okay, Lyle Education, I'm sorry, brings us back, I jumped the gun there. 11C is Intergovernmental did not meet. 11D is Lend and that also did not meet. 11E is Lyle Education Foundation, the minutes are in file. And 11F is SACID. And also, I believe the governing board, the agenda is also present and filed.
It is. We had cupcakes too.
Okay, well noted, okay. That's always a big draw.
Yeah. We don't have cupcakes.
We don't, we don't.
But that's because we have to have some everybody.
That's right. Item 12 is agenda topics for future board meetings. Anyone have anything that they want to bring back for future board meetings?
I had one and then I had a clarifying question. Is there any further detail to the follow-up on that public comment from last month or is that something that would, just the, the safety of the child concern? Is there anything further? Just, I know there was follow-up done, but...
I wouldn't be comfortable talking about that in a public meeting, so...
Okay, all right. I don't know if that's something for maybe closed session.
We can, we can include it in next month.
Yeah. To make sure we have good security around that. And then I know we had maybe a year and a half ago, very early when I was on the board, the security consultant came and did a presentation for us over the summer. I don't know if that's something maybe not next month, but like a future meeting. I don't know how, what's the rhythm in which he comes? I forget his name.
I think his name is Paul Tim. Is that who you're referring to?
Yes, yeah, yeah. What's, does he come every couple of years or?
No, he came, I think, a number of years ago and we've consulted with him here and there as we've done various projects. I think he came out here for the reunification drill that we did, but we don't have him on retainer or anything like that.
I don't know if that's something to look at, just I feel like it's a good measure to check our security on, you know, some routine basis there and just have that, you know, his professional perspective on that so we can have those. I know it's a closed session meeting.
We can get a proposal from him. I don't remember what he charged us when he did an evaluation last time he did it, but we can bring a proposal to you and see if you would like to have a, what type of assessment you'd like for him to do.
And I think one of the reasons he came is, is the assessment of the four years and of each of the schools to see if we had everything in place, especially with new construction. And it also gave us some insight as, as we were developing the plan for the junior high as to what to have, but we can certainly get an assessment and decide from there. I don't think anything's changed with the measures at the, at the schools, but yet it would be good to see what, what, what topics he would be bringing to us that would be different or new if, if indeed we decided on that. Okay? Anything else? If not, I will, I believe we are not, not returning to, there's no need to return to closed session. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:21 PM.
So moved, second.
Okay, we've got it. Mr. Nagler and Mr. Hilterly. Okay, I wasn't hearing an echo. All right, then we are adjourned at 8:21 PM. Thank you.